I feel like it was something I said. I see that.
Okay.
I moved it over there. So I didn't lose it. Because I do that, too. It slides under my computer and I'm like, oh, it's gone. Are you okay? Are you ready? Yeah. Okay.
All right, good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight and welcome on this meeting. This is our regular meeting. I will call it to order. It is 7:07. I am Patty McCoy. We are going to start our meeting with a moment of silence. Sadly, the school community lost a student from Plymouth High School suddenly. So we will have a moment of silence. All right, thank you so much. And we will start our meeting. We have come out of closed session. So we will have a roll call. I will start on my left with member Brooks.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening, Patrick Keough. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening. Anupam Chuksedu, thanks for being here.
Hello, everyone. Lauren Christensen, welcome.
Superintendent Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff, please?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, who is standing in for Diane Robertson, Ms. Liz Adams. And thank her for taking our minutes. And I'd like to ask the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Good evening. Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. Beth Rale, Chief Academic Officer. Thanks for being here.
All right, we will stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I am looking for a motion for the adoption of the agenda and approval of consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve of the consent agenda, action, agenda, action. Items 22, 11, 24.
Thank you. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. It was moved by member Brooks and seconded by member Sidhu that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda. Action item 22, 11, 24. Would you like to take us through the agenda, please?
This evening, the consent agenda consists of our human resources transactions since our last time together. We have new hires, a resolution for the data and assessment coordinator for your consideration, resignations and retirements. We have the approval of the minutes from the special meeting on November 4th and November the 9th is our regular meeting. We have final reading on policies. Bylaw 1, 67.3, public participation at board meetings. Policy 8402, emergency operations plans, and bylaw 0166, the agenda.
Thank you. I will call for the vote. All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no.
I just want to remind all that we are required to wear masks while in attendance here at the meeting. So we have extra ones outside if you don't have them.
I'm sorry, I don't see Dr. Burtini and Gibbs.
She is not here.
Are you gonna... Mr. Tiskowitz.
Thank you, President McCoy. Pleased to welcome Amy Shoemaker, who will be our new speech therapist at Allen Elementary. Amy, if you can stand and be recognized, thank you. Amy comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Baylor University and a master's degree from the University of Texas. She has five years of school experience and 11 years of experience in the private sector. We welcome Amy and thank you for choosing Plymouth Canton Schools. Also, I'd like to introduce Mr. Scott Victor, who will be our new physical education teacher at Hoben and Gallimore Elementary. Welcome, Scott. Scott comes to us with a bachelor's from Michigan State University and a master's from Auburn University and three years of public school experience. Welcome. Also, I'd like to recognize retirement. We have Nancy Leib from our payroll department, who has been here nearly 25 years and she will be retiring. We certainly appreciate Nancy's work in the 25 years that she's been here. She's been in the payroll department all 25 years. She will be deeply missed because of her expertise in that area and making sure everyone gets their paycheck.
And also, Ms. Bowers?
Yep, she's next.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to introduce Michelle Bauer. Michelle is being recommended for the data and assessment coordinator position. Michelle is no stranger to Plymouth Canton School. She comes to us as the former secretary to the Teaching and Learning Department. And I know she'll be missed there in that role, but she will do a wonderful job as the data and assessment coordinator. Michelle has been employed by Plymouth Canton Schools for a number of years and in a variety of different roles. She started out as a special education paraprofessional, has spent some time in the EL office and to the secretary of the Teaching and Learning Department. So we welcome Michelle and I know she'll do a fantastic job for us as well. Thank you, Michelle.
All right, thank you so much. So we are moving on to the Board Committee Reports in Action. Generally, we don't do celebrating success this week because we have the holiday. So first up is the President's Report. We have, members have been busy. Members Sidhu will give an update about the MASB Annual Leadership Conference that she went to in Grand Rapids a week and a half ago. So she will talk about that near the end of the meeting. And member Chastang, who is not here tonight, because tonight is the band banquet. She traveled to Indianapolis where our band competed in the Grand Nationals. They were 28th in the nation, so they had a really good showing. So we're very proud of them and also thank the directors and all the entire crew that goes with them. It's quite a production if you've never seen it. We did have a meeting on Saturday. We had a workshop from 10 to 1:00 and we finished up working on the dynamic plan goals. So that will move on to the Steering Committee. And ideally, we will be able to get the whole dynamic plan done by the end of January. So we, it was very productive and we still have some, we will be working then. We are moving on in the fourth. Yes. The fourth, we have, we will be working on superintendent evaluation so that we get a little jump on next year. So that is it. Next up is Student Performance and Achievement Committee with members Sidhu.
Thank you, President McCoy. We have not had a meeting since last, our last meeting, which was earlier this month. We do have a meeting coming up next Wednesday, December 1 at 5:00 PM. We will be looking at data and have a deep conversation around the NWEA results as well as other topics. But the agenda will be posted probably by Monday of that week. So please join us if you can.
Next up is Policy Committee. We have also not had a meeting since the last meeting. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, December 7, which is the night of our next board meeting. It is 5:30. It will be held in the collaboration space, which is down the hallway to the end of this building. Everyone is welcome to attend. I do want to remind people that by law, 167.3, public participation at board meetings does change some of the format for our citizen comments. However, that will not go into effect until the first meeting in January. It will be posted on the website, put on to the online information so that everybody will have a heads up to that. So if you are interested in our next meeting, it is December 7 at 5:30. Next up, we have Finance and Operations with Mr. Keough.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, November 18, here in this room. And we discussed the financial statements for the month of October. We reviewed a number of the construction projects that we're doing at the high school and student, including the auditorium, updates and additions and the work that we're doing to make sure that we can make that accessible to all, as well as some challenges that we had with respect to the construction and the timing of that. We think that those are all moving ahead well now. We also reviewed, from a technology perspective, two items that will be on the agenda this evening. One is on the emergency connectivity funds and some opportunities to participate in that federal grants program, as well as some upgrades that we would do for the CTE computers that we use in our computer labs. So those will both be on the agenda this evening. Our next meeting is next Thursday, December 2 at 5:00 PM here in this room. And again, the community is welcome.
All right, thank you so much. And member Chastang is not here, so nothing to report there. Now we'll move on to CE, which is Administrative Reports and Recommendations. And Superintendent Merritt, you are up next.
I am going to be briefed this evening, recognizing that I am what stands between people and food preparation for Thanksgiving. So just wanted to always take an opportunity to, in this season of being thankful and grateful, just continue to share how grateful I am for our incredible staff. I wanted to highlight a few educators this evening. Ms. Merrill DeRose, SHAPE Michigan, this prestigious health and physical education professional educator organization is proud to announce PCCS's own Merrill DeRose as the 2021 Adaptive Teacher of the Year. This annual award acknowledges exceptional contributions in curriculum teaching methodologies, professional commitment, and the provision of innovative learning experiences in order to impact the lives of students. As I think about the work that we're doing with our dynamic plan right now and one of those strong pillars being in innovation and being nationally recognized will be our goal and to know that our own PCCS teacher is putting us there on the map. So Mr. Rose and all of the award winners will be honored at the SHAPE Michigan Virtual Awards Program in January. And specific details on that event will be available on the SHAPE Michigan website. We send our congratulations and gratitude to Merrill and thank her for the amazing work she does with our district's adaptive physical education students, including Ms. Mackie Merritt, who she has also been a teacher to and has been just such an inspiration to my very own child as well. So I appreciate her. Also, a name that is familiar to the Board of Education from past honors. We're also proud that Pioneer Middle Schools, Gwyn Marciano, who actually retired this year. She's adding to her trophy case by being named as K-12 School Librarian of the Year during the 2021 Michigan Library Awards. This award celebrates and honors those who have championed the work of school libraries through supporting students and staff members every day. Gwyn has devoted years of excellent service to Pioneer Middle School and we congratulate her on this esteemed recognition. And again, when we look to that pillar and being recognized, our amazing professionals continue to help us put our name on the map. So we're so appreciative. And I just continue to be grateful for each and every one of our staff members being able to work alongside you each and every day. I consider it a blessing and a privilege as we continue to build the educational environment that supports learning for our students. Just wanted to give one final notice. PCCS is applying, of course, to receive the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. You've heard us talk about the SIR3 funds, along with accessing funding made available through an equalization allocation. You'll hear us refer to that as 11T. And remember, with that equalization funding, that allowed every single district in the state of Michigan to receive an equal amount of this federal fund to support the impact of COVID-19 and the pandemic on our students. In particular, the spirit of that grant is looking at the social emotional impact and the trauma that our students and staff have experienced throughout the pandemic and how we can move forward to support unfinished learning and some of those emerging needs. So as a part of this application that is due on December the 15th, we wanted to take an opportunity to engage, as we are required to do, in terms of getting meaningful feedback from our stakeholders. Just some thoughts around how we believe, as a district, we could best appropriate the use of our funds to support student learning and, once again, to mitigate this impact of COVID-19, addressing the needs of our students that are within the parameters of the grant funds as well. So your input is greatly appreciated. We are going to launch this survey that allows people to answer some questions about, really, their top priorities. But then there's an open-ended section as well where you could share maybe some creative ideas that you've thought about or some emerging needs that even people, to date, we've been meeting and we have an unfinished learning task force, for example, that we have not come forward with. So with this survey, we are launching that, I believe, today.
Today.
And it will be open for two weeks. So it will close on December the 7 at 11:59 PM. So we'll have this information on our website. We'll send it out to our staff, I think, received it already, our community, and just encourage your feedback on how we move forward with providing these supports for our students and staff. So with that, I am going to bring closure to my report today. Thank you, President McCoy.
Thank you so much. So next up, we are on to teaching and learning with Ms. Rale.
Yep, and it's my honor to introduce Maureen Molloy, Director of Elementary Education, who's going to tee up our school improvement highlights from Field Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to share with you some highlights of the elementary programming and spotlighting Field Elementary School, led by our principal, Letitia Thomas. This is a group of individuals and dedicated professionals that I'm very grateful for and glad to have the opportunity to share some highlights of their work tonight with you. So I'll turn it over to Principal Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to thank you for the opportunity to share highlights about Field Elementary and our school improvement plan. I have some members of my team here with me tonight. Kristy Schwartz is our student support coordinator. Diane Danahy is our kindergarten teacher, one of our kindergarten teachers. And Nick Ivaco is one of our third grade teachers. So thank you to all of them for being here as well. So these are three areas that we're going to share with you tonight. Supporting social emotional learning, increasing proficiency in reading in ELA, and our focused work connected to our Building Equity Plan. The strategy highlights are explicit SEL instruction, culturally proficient instructional practices, and then using data to ensure equity. So teachers are the drivers of SEL in classrooms and their own social emotional competence and wellbeing strongly influence their students. Because of this, we are intentionally integrating SEL in our work together and sharing and modeling practices with teachers that can be used in the classroom. This looks like common language, building common understanding around social emotional competencies and practices, and the use of common resources such as second step lessons. We also encourage one another with a monthly bulletin board with uplifting messages, appreciations at the end of each staff meeting, and weekly shout-outs in the principal newsletter. This list shows the different protocols we have utilized in staff meetings, which are immediately transferable to students in the classroom. Now Kristy will share more SEL with a student focus.
Thank you, Letitia. So with SEL, we're also looking at the social emotional learning of our students, the heart of what we do. And we began some in-house SEL components, actually, the year prior to last year when our district had their SEL initiative. And one thing we have at Field is called SOAR. We are the Field Eagles. That's our mascot. And with SOAR, we are focusing on character traits of self-control, being optimistic, being assertive, and being responsible. So then what we did is when the district began their initiative last year in 2021, we, as a staff, integrated what we already do with SOAR into what the district was doing. And it was really a nice alignment because the SOAR competency, sorry, the SEL competencies aligned really well, pretty much aligned perfectly with what we did with SOAR. And one thing we did with SOAR is we have teachers that actually nominate students for the different character traits. And then the picture on the right was pre-COVID. And what we did is we would have a celebration assembly where we invited parents to come in. Since COVID has happened, we have had pre-taped assemblies that we still share with parents. We call parents, too. So this helps to kind of bridge that communication. So our parents are being communicated with about positive reasons and they enjoy those phone calls. They enjoy hearing about these. So that's a picture there. The students also receive a certificate and a T-shirt. And then what we do, too, is we have been connecting the SEL work for the district with our PBIS. We are a PBIS school at Field. And that's looking at positive behavior interventions and supports. And this year, what we did is we actually created a roadmap, which really integrates all of our work so that we're not seeing it as one more thing. We're seeing it as how it all weaves together to help children. And you can see here, we have some common language, lots of literature connections. We also, our music teacher, Mrs. Shutt, has actually created a song for us that brings the SOAR character traits right into the song. And we also have positive referrals that are called "We See You Soaring", and we read those on the announcements every day. And it's become something where you can really see that positive character is contagious because the students hear their names and they want to be on the announcements. So more students are showing the different character traits at our school because they're seeing that kindness and that positive character. Another thing, too, is just having that connection. We're trying to really integrate. And so if you look at our district mission, what we've highlighted here is what we do at Field. So at Field, we are dedicated to provide educational opportunities for each student to achieve excellence. We are making sure that all children will learn, achieve, and be successful. We want to increase learning for every student and we want them to share their voice and honor their perspective. So that's really our focus, is always honoring our students and making sure all students are included. And we do this a lot, too, through having the culturally proficient instruction interwoven into our academics and interwoven into our classroom culture. So looking at academics, next up would be Diane, who will be highlighting mathematics at Field.
Good evening. So students are all supported in math, no matter what grade you're in. But in kindergarten, their first real experience of math, they are given the opportunity to work in small groups with myself or the other kindergarten teachers or their paraprofessional that's in the classroom. Students are encouraged to work with the manipatives to help reinforce the concepts that they are being taught. Counting and cardinality is only taught in kindergarten. It's not taught in any other grade level. Oh, thank you. Sorry, I forgot about that. I'm not used to these things. We don't use those in kindergarten. So it's important for the students to know what do the numbers actually mean and how do they relate to math and what they really represent. We talk about math every day in kindergarten. We create a classroom environment that is safe for them to take the risks and to share their thinking. In kindergarten, we make the learning of math relative to them. What does it mean? We make it seeing numbers in the stores when they're out with their parents, comparing sizes of objects in their environment, or even recognizing shapes all around them in the classroom, at home, or in the... See, I have to keep going on. But just so that they are aware that math is all around them. So Nick Ivaco is going to now talk about the ELA.
Hi. I want to focus my time on talking about how we teach English Language Arts through a culturally responsive lens. That begins with the relationships that we establish with our students. We know that students are more motivated and are at their best when they feel heard, when they feel valued. So by taking the time at the beginning of the year to get to know our students, by getting to know them, by valuing their interests, their backgrounds, we create strong bonds with our students and learn more about how to best instruct them. Time is spent, as well, establishing norms for whole group and partner discussion to increase student ability to share their thoughts, to share their ideas. We want all students to be able to be heard in the classroom and we want their ideas out and to be heard by their peers. We also spend time teaching various thinking routines, which allow our students to grapple with content in a structured way that they can apply across different lessons. That includes the 3-2-1 Bridge, where students are able to ask questions about a topic, make connections between lessons, or generate keywords. It also includes the Triple T, which is the Think-Turn-Tell, which allows students to brainstorm ideas about a topic before turning and talking with a trusted partner. These norms tie across subjects and across lessons and we're able to apply them across ELA. One of the most valuable opportunities we have to engage students in ELA with cultural responsiveness is our Read Aloud with Accountable Talk. Teachers make very intentional book choices that will open our students' eyes to different perspectives. These choices are also made to reflect and represent all of our students in our classrooms. We're a multicultural school and we want our students to be able to see themselves in the characters in the books that we read. These books are also chosen to provide non-stereotypical viewpoints of different cultures. We want to expose students to the challenges that different cultures have faced, but also acknowledging that these people are more than just their challenges. And we want our students to be able to gain a holistic understanding of cultures that were unknown to them. Read Aloud is a fantastic opportunity to do so. Read Aloud also gives us the opportunity to discuss current events. Websites like Newsela, Scholastic News, give us the opportunity to connect students to topics that are relevant in their own lives and give us a springboard to understanding the world around us. We call it Read Aloud with Accountable Talk because we are talking about what we read. Students engage in safe, open, honest conversations with one another. And because we know that students bring different perspectives, our conversations are deeper. Those classroom norms, the intellectual safety and openness to new ideas is really important here and serves to push our conversations in positive ways. Really important for us in our ELA instruction is encouraging student choice. We know that motivation and engagement are higher when students are provided choice. So in making connections to student interest and then pushing them to make choices while learning about reading, writing, spelling, we know that they are more interested in a topic. Teachers are very intentional about making culturally relevant connections to our students. So a lesson on reading goals, where we focus on Billie Eilish or LeBron James setting goals for themselves, or co-editing or writing a passage about Dole, a student's favorite food, or discussing the character traits of the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, who are somehow popular again. We try to bring in background knowledge, which allows students to begin engaging with curriculum in ways that are familiar to them. That then pushes into choice. Students choose the books that they read from diverse classroom libraries. Students choose the topics that they write about. They work with partners of, frequently of their choosing, to be able to discuss different perspectives on a lesson. We also assess in a variety of different ways, knowing that students demonstrate knowledge in different ways. We want to present students with as much choice in their work because by giving them that choice, they can work in ways they're comfortable with and ways that they are, they feel they are proficient. I want to finish by focusing on the supports that are provided to students. Because we know that no two students are the same and come into our classrooms with their own experiences, supports are provided to ensure equitable access to curriculum. So that would include providing definition of key vocabulary terms for English language learners, sentence frames when responding to a question in our notebooks or, you know, in a science or social studies lesson. or, you know, in a science or social studies lesson. We also have our one-to-one Chromebook program, which allows for technological adaption for students. The Google Read and Write Program helps students with typing or for challenging text to be read aloud or adapted. Much of our instruction also happens in small group settings, where we can better meet the needs of individual students. That, you know, for some students looks like spelling three-letter words with magnet letters. For others, we're discussing the theme of a historical fiction book about the Revolutionary War. By working in small groups or one-on-one, we can better meet the needs of our individual students. Summing up, our instructional practices in ELA depend really heavily on cultural responsiveness. Students feel at home and intellectually engaged in our classrooms because they're safe, because their backgrounds and perspectives are valued and brought into the curriculum, and because they're challenged with new ideas and are given choice in their work. Thank you.
So now I'm going to share with you what our next steps are. One action that was suggested from our Building Equity team was to continue to increase student voice agency and to cultivate a culturally competent school environment. We're working toward this by continuing with the Multicultural Ambassadors Club and Student Council. I want to share with you that the Multiculture Ambassadors Club mission is to empower students as ambassadors for identity, diversity, justice, and action in a multicultural world. The MAC Club strives to foster empathy, reduce prejudice, learn about other students' cultural backgrounds, and challenge stereotypes. Our MAC members become leaders in fostering a culturally competent school environment with student-led equity initiatives. And one of those initiatives pictured here was a cultural quilt. Each field eagle created a culture card about themselves and their family, which formed our culture quilt. Teachers and staff participated in this as well. We will continue to add to the diverse books list that we created to align with culturally competent instructional practices and depict a wide range of cultures. So what questions have we created for you this evening?
I just want to thank you for your presentation and giving us the glimpse into, you know, the wonderful things that are happening at Field. I don't have any questions. Members to do?
Thank you. First of all, I love the "We See You Soaring".
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
And I want to say, I know this is a rough time for a lot of educators. We're going on a second year of a pandemic, and people are exhausted and running on empty. And I want to thank you for all that you do and putting kids first. And this shows us how much you value our kids. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I want to echo Ms. Doos' comments, and really thank you for the intentional work of putting the students centered in all of the practices that you're doing and for deliberately integrating your cultural responsiveness into the programs instead of having it be a separate unit by itself, but making it so that it's foundational in the work that you're doing. This is exactly the kinds of things that we want to see happening. We appreciate the update on how this is going at Field.
Thank you so much. Member Brooks?
Yeah, just thanks. Thanks for your presentation. It was a great presentation. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is amazing. I really like this quilt. The idea of having all the students and staff make something. It's very nice. And as Member Sedu said, yes, we really appreciate the work you do there. It has been rough. So, thank you for supporting our students and their families.
Thank you so much. Now we are on to three, Finance and Operations with Ms. Piaz.
Good evening. We are looking at first readings that were considered at the FNO meeting last Thursday. First up, I know Mr. Solszer's in the audience and Ms. Rails here at the table. If you have any questions, but this is the resolution to purchase equipment and services using an FCC Emergency Connectivity Funds. And so I know Mr. Solszer can speak to this far more eloquently than I. So, Mr. Solszer?
I don't know if you had a chance to review, but we are back for another round of requests for the federal government's Emergency Connectivity Fund. And we were able to identify some additional unmet needs that we applied for during the window's opening. And we're very hopeful that we'll have another favorable ruling. And we'll see where that takes us. I don't know if you have any questions in particular, though.
Does anybody have any questions about this?
I think it's just a good reminder for those that are watching at home and those in the audience that this is a program that the FCC did to help address the issues of remote learners and virtual learners and students. And we have been able to purchase a lot of different technology to refresh aging devices that we had. In the first round of the program, we're replacing thousands of Chromebooks as part of that process, as well as providing some remote connectivity devices. And this is a chance for us to do the same thing, this time focused on iPads and still a small set of those connectivity devices. So there's no guarantee that we'll get the grant in this process, but if you don't apply, you don't get awarded. And Mark and the team have done an outstanding job of staying on top of these opportunities and protecting the interests of our students and the educational programs that we have. So we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a resolution for the CTE Technology Purchase. This is also a first reading. It was also discussed at the last FNO meeting on November the 18th. And I know Mr. Solszer is here again to give us an overview of this purchase for the CTE program.
I'll actually share that, Montine, are you... Do you want to say something?
No, you're great.
We'd like to hear about what you're going to use these for, so maybe after Mark speaks.
So, we have a five-year cycle for refreshing of equipment in our computing labs. So we have about 30 labs, and quite a number of them are CTE-oriented. Two of those have been identified as having equipment that's in their fifth year. We don't want it to go to a sixth year. They have funding available to do a refresh. At the FNO, we discussed the purchase. Unfortunately, the question was raised regarding the generation of the processor that we were going to be purchasing. And very fortunate, I hope the kudos went to Member Kehoe, but we reached out... We were concerned, or at least the gentleman that was helping do the review was concerned with the lead times. But we established that we would be able to get the 11th gen at the same price because the vendor was willing to work with us. And so we actually have the same pricing as we saw on Thursday, bringing to you tonight with an 11th gen refresh that we feel very confident would bode well for our students in their lab for the next five years. Fingers crossed. And I don't know if Montine would like to speak anymore about those two labs.
Yeah, see, I'd like to know what we're using the computers for. One...
Keep speaking, Mike.
Whoa, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
One set of computers will go in Ms. Nylund's classroom. It's the CAD and engineering classroom. So we're hoping... Technology has been really wonderful to us and worked with us over the past... How long have I been here? Six years. To support us in keeping our technology up to date for the best use for our students. So, in doing that, we've been real intentional with our spending and set a refresh plan in place so that we would constantly be able to upgrade our technology. In Ms. Nylund's class, the computers will be... It will help us move a little faster. It'll help us download some more software that we can't on the older computers. Same in Ms. O'Neill's classroom. She is a computer science programming and STEM teacher. So she is working with us to upgrade her computers and implement some more strategic instruction. So if you ever get an opportunity to visit either one of their classrooms, they're amazing. Ms. Nylund, at the very beginning of the year, does a fabulous lesson on superheroes, where they design and generate their own capes and then 3D print them as a SEL connection. So it's really awesome. They're fabulous. Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I will take you up on the offer of visiting the class.
Yeah.
She's wonderful. Yes. And she actually has two labs. We're refurbishing one of them. So she's kind of adjusting the space.
And so if I remember correctly, we've... And this may be a question for Mark as well. We've been doing continuous refreshes of the CTE devices, but it's not all in one classroom. Like, we did a refresh last year for some equipment in different classrooms. So you've got different classrooms as their needs change. We're making sure that we keep them current and up to date, correct?
Correct. As a matter of fact, we planned at the time a five-year cycle, and we addressed different classrooms in every year. So you're going to see us a lot, but it's always so that we can get the best technology for the kids in all of the spaces.
Okay. We're excited about this.
Thanks. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. All right. So now we are on to D, which is Citizens Comments. And I have one. I have Kara Gavin. Come on up. Mr. Brandon will start the timer. You will have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Hello, everybody. My name's Kara Gavin. I'm a resident of Plymouth and mother of a seventh-grade student at West Middle School. And I'm here to ask the board and the district leaders about three matters based on input and messages I've received from other parents in the district. First, rapid antigen tests. On Friday, the governor announced a new program called My Backpack Home Tests, which provides free at-home COVID antigen tests to participating schools to give to families. This program means free access to these tests, which can cost $15 to $25 in drugstores and can be very hard to find if you can find one at all. And while rapid antigen tests are no substitute for PCR tests, they are very good for spotting someone who is actively contagious with COVID, whether or not they have symptoms. And we know that a lot of people don't have symptoms in the first few days, but are still spreading the virus. So if a child has been a close contact of a known case or has a fever or other symptoms, having one of these tests at home, ready to go, would mean the difference between a child potentially going to school contagious and a child staying home in isolation and avoiding infecting others, including their family. Rapid antigen tests are also good for giving families peace of mind that their child who has common symptoms is in the clear if the result is negative. My vaccinated daughter recently had to miss three days of school while we waited for PCR test results to tell us what a rapid antigen test told us in 15 minutes, that her headache and stomach ache were not COVID. Is our district signing up to take part in the pilot program or to join the program once the pilot phase is over? Or are you considering taking a part in other state testing programs? Second, I have heard through parents of student athletes that the MHSA is changing its guidance about masking during competition for indoor winter sports and that PCCS may follow suit. And I cannot say this strongly enough. This flies directly in the face of both the PCCS COVID Mitigation Toolkit and the Wayne County Public Health Order, which says that masks must be worn inside all school buildings. The dashboard of COVID activity in the Plymouth-Canton area was just updated today and shows that we are now above the rates that we saw during the surge in April. This is not the time for athletes to be unmasking when they're in contact with others indoors, even if they're wearing masks on the bench or in practice. The fact that some of the teams we play are from counties or districts that don't have mask mandates and have lower vaccination rates than ours raises the risk even higher. And my third question is about vaccination. Simply put, will the district be hosting vaccination clinics for the community on school property? Wayne County is already lagging behind Oakland and Washtenaw Counties very badly in vaccination of five- to 11-year-olds. And with the winter holidays coming up, this is a critical time to prevent cases in and spread from this age group. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody else have a comment they wanted to make? Okay. Then we will move on to E, Action Items Discussion. First up, we have Members to Do, which will give us a debrief on the MASB Annual Leadership Conference.
Thank you. And I will be brief because I do want to echo what Superintendent Merritt said. I don't want to keep you all very long. I know people want to get home. But I do want to just quick share that the MASB Fall Annual Leadership Conference was fantastic. We had a lot of great keynote speakers. And the theme with all of these leaders that were keynotes was really about leading with empathy, love, engagement, and compassion. And I'll send all of you on my board colleagues and Superintendent Merritt, I will send you some highlights of the big themes and some of the sessions that I attended around strategic planning. I thought that was timely because that's what we're engaging in right now. So really good stuff there, but I think the overall message is this is the time that we need to lead with love. I mean, that was like the common theme over and over again. It is so critical for us right now to be leading with empathy and love. And one of the speakers actually said, you know, we know that teachers love their content, but love your kids before your content. And I thought that was real... That just hit home to me, really. It was beautiful. But the Delegate Assembly, I want to point out two things that really came out of that. So there were a lot of items that were voted on, but there were two new resolutions that were passed that I think are worth mentioning here. One is around strategic plans, goals, and accountability. Again, it seems timely because that's what we're working on here. And I'm just going to quick read you a little excerpt of that. "Strategic Plan Empowers School Districts to Plan for Continuous Change. It is used to communicate with the entire school community, the board's vision for the district goals related to making the vision a reality, and the actions needed to achieve those goals. The plan should also include related support materials such as timelines and measurements." And again, I mention that because that's exactly what we're working on. So when we voted on that, and that was passed, I thought, wow, we're in alignment here. The other one was around social-emotional learning and support. Again, complete alignment to what we're doing right now. And I'm going to read you a little snippet of that. "The Michigan Association of School Board urges school boards to establish and implement social-emotional learning and support within their schools to address the social-emotional needs of students. Social-emotional competencies include self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making." As we saw with Field, they were working on that. So again, for me, those things were really critical in hearing that we are in alignment with what we're doing statewide and nationally. And so those are just two of the brief things I wanted to mention here. Again, I'll email you some of the other documents, but a great conference overall. And if next year, more people can go, it would be worth it.
That's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for going. Did they say where they will have next year's yet or not?
I believe Traverse City.
Okay.
In winter.
Well, it's November.
We did that.
That's not bad. All right. So the next thing is future agenda topics. Does anybody have any future agenda topics they would like added to the calendar?
I just haven't looked at the calendar, so forgive me. When are we having our meeting about the annual data dive? Is that in the December or January?
On NWEA Fall Data. That is December 7th.
And is it going to include other data except for with... Along with NWEA? Are we going to look at... Because we... Don't we do an annual deep dive with data in terms of not NWEA, but we look at like a five-year overall data and where the gaps are?
So not just NWEA? You mean like attendance and all?
Attendance, SAT, PSAT.
That's later in the year. We have those broken up. We don't do those in every night. So I think those might be in February.
February, okay. We wanted to know the dates.
Let's see them on there.
I have one thing I would like to add to... I don't know if it works in with our board governance work. If it could be a topic we do in there. But I would like us to have a workshop on power and privilege and how that affects our work here and just overall in the school district.
I'd like to have an update on where we're at with our COVID mitigation and management strategies as we look at the data that we're seeing, our number of quarantine cases, the number of cases in our community have gone up substantially. And I think it's important that we have a deeper conversation as a board on whether our existing processes are effective and working and how we might need to make adjustments or changes to those things.
Did anybody have anything else? All right. Um, so last, the last meeting, um, Member Wilson had wanted something put onto the calendar, and I see it is on the bottom of the draft calendar. And, and I'm sorry, Ms., Adams asked me about, um, about questions which I did not find until today. And then we had something about, I have communication around transportation. And I'm not sure if that was a question, or we just, we had some additional information sent in board notes?
Yeah, I think it's just maybe to update the community as to where we're at with the transformation, transportation process, as well as the information we got in board notes.
Okay.
I think there's a scheduled communication for community that's on this next week. So they do that the last week of the month.
Okay. Perfect. And then, yes?
Go ahead.
Okay. And so I did not have any from tonight.
So I just wanted to ask one question with respect to the, the, the comments that came from Ms. Gavin. I, I thought that you'd mentioned that there is some vaccination clinics that are coming up.
Yes, looking for confirmation. I think we actually got the date and we'll communicate that out. We will have a, um, clinic, I want to say it is the fifteenth. Am I saying that correctly?
Seventeenth, December.
The fifteenth, and then the second dose will be given on January the fifth. So we just received that confirmation, and we'll get that out on our website. We will work in conjunction with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Wayne County Health Department to host that clinic here at PCCS.
Okay. And is that just one clinic?
Just one clinic, yes.
Okay.
Two, two doses, one clinic.
Right. And just, I, I know that right now, appointments are some, somewhat harder to get because the boosters have been made available. So we, if we, the sooner we can get out to assess interest on that, to be able to gauge whether, how many people we're going to have. I know that towards the end, our clinics were, um, not as well-attended because of the ready availability. But I, I've talked to families that are struggling to find appointments.